Certainly, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hedges?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Here.
And Mayor Diaz Nash?
Here. Thank you. We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be here in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request-to-speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, please press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, please press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We will begin tonight's special meeting with a closed session item. Item number one, conference with labor negotiators. But before we convene to close session, city clerk, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
Madam Mayor, I have not received any requests to speak on item number one on the agenda. If you wish to speak on item number one on the agenda, please provide me with your request to speak slip at this time. We will also call for our remote attendees. If you wish to speak on our closed session item, please raise your hand. We'll give you a few moments to do so. Madam Mayor, we have not received any requests to speak on the closed session item.
Okay, well then I close public comment and we will convene to close session in conference room C. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Councilmembers, Manira Sandhu, Planning Manager, and to my right is Rachel Horst, our Housing Manager. And I'll be presenting on the bespoke project, which is a full block mixed-use development proposal located partially on city land. The city has been in active negotiations on the deal terms with the development team and is seeking council direction on two key areas associated with those negotiations tonight. I do want to note that the council will not be taking any action on the project tonight. It is really a study session intended to seek direction on these two areas. So the two areas that will be the focus of tonight's conversation are focused on assurances related to seeing the delivery of affordable housing units on city land, as well as the project schedule and completion of those housing units. And we'll go into some background before we get back to these options. So to provide some history and some more details about the project site, the city owns a small surface parking lot at the corner of Fourth Avenue and Railroad Avenue, as shown and outlined here in red. And this parking lot is adjacent to the former Talbot site and also across from the recently completed Kiku Crossing Affordable Housing Project. The city in July, I'm sorry, in January of 2021 declared the site surplus land and issued an RFP, a request for proposal, for development of affordable housing at the site. The city received three valid proposals, and in July of 2021, the city selected the three-party development team of Prometheus and Harvest Properties as the commercial developer and Alta Housing as the affordable housing developer for exclusive negotiations. There were several reasons why this team was selected, primarily because of their ability to be able to assemble the entire block, to allow for a better-designed project, to allow for seamless transitions between the commercial and the residential parts of the projects, and also to be able to provide a shared parking garage that would facilitate more parking for the affordable units, which includes a number of family units as well. Based on that selection, in October of 2021, the city entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with this applicant or with this development team, with the city being a partner. And this agreement envisioned a ten-year development and disposition agreement, had certain draft deal terms outlined that formed the basis of the additional negotiations. And these deal terms were also considered by City Council in May of last year. The ENA itself was for a period of three years, and thus it's actually about to expire in October of 2024. And the three years were intended for the project team to assemble the parcels, to propose a development, to continue with the entitlement process, and to develop the finer deal points and draft the agreements to account for the city property and financial support. Since May of last year, staffing changes at the city's end and delays from the applicants have made progress a little difficult. However, a number of deal terms were finalized, and there are only two key remaining issues that are unresolved, which is the focus of tonight's discussion, tied to the assurances on the affordable housing delivery as well as the project schedule. So a little deeper into what the current bespoke project is. So based on all of the back and forth, the final project, which is currently under development review, includes 71 units of affordable housing proposed to be developed by Alta Housing. And the intent there is to accommodate a mix of ages and incomes, such as including rents from 30% to 70% of area median income, including more than 50% of the units as being family-style units, so there are two- and three-bedroom units. And then also, Alta, on the city's request, is providing 5,600 square feet of ground floor space for self-help for the elderly to allow for their move from the Central Park Recreation Center. The commercial portion of the development, which will be built by Harvest and Prometheus, includes roughly 153,000 square feet of commercial office spaces and approximately 14,000 square feet of retail space along the B Street corridor, which would revitalize that part of downtown and provide for more economic opportunity. The project currently, in its current form, has 137 underground parking stalls proposed, of which 37 would be dedicated to the housing units. And there are some additional deal terms that the applicant, the development team and the city reached in terms of providing 25 additional shared parking spaces to the residential units and opening up the rest of the garage for public use during evenings and weekends. Oh, sorry, before I move on, I would like to note that the project plans have been deemed complete, and the city is on the verge of completing the environmental review, which can be released for public review and comment in the coming weeks. Some additional detail about how the project and the deal terms have evolved. So since October of 2021, the development team was able to assemble the entire block. The affordable units actually increased from 52 to 71. And of course, the city's commitment towards the project also correspondingly increased from $2 million to $3 million. The office space went up because of the additional parcels being acquired. And then while the residential parking was reduced by one, I believe the original ENA had said 38 spaces would be provided, but the applicant agreed to provide 25 shared parking spaces and allow for public parking in the rest of the garage. I do want to add that in case of a residential project being unable to move forward, additional assurances were also added as part of those negotiations in the form of secondary deposit and contributions by the commercial development team at certificate of occupancy for commercial building. And I'll go into these a little bit in detail at later slides. In terms of the financial deal terms, to summarize, the city would be contributing land as a 99-year ground lease at $1 per year. The city is committed to contributing $3 million towards the affordable housing project. The development team will contribute $2.9 million towards the affordable housing project upon entitlement. And the commercial development team will also finance and construct the shared underground parking garage valued between $5 million and $7 million. And the ground floor space, which would be leased to self-help for the elderly, would be at a subsidized rent of $1 per year. And the items in blue were adds that were done in recent months. As part of these negotiations around the deal terms, the biggest gap has lied in the assurances that city staff has been seeking from the development team on seeing the residential units built. The commercial project currently benefits from city land contributions as well as state-density bonus concessions and waivers tied to the affordable housing piece, which is proposed on city land and which the city believes is the linchpin for the entire project. Typically, in mixed-use projects of this nature, this kind of affordable housing development occurs first, or at least occurs concurrently with the commercial piece of the project, so that the certificates of occupancy for both the residential and the commercial are tied together. However, the complex nature of this project and the construction phasing with the shared underground garage presents some challenges. The underground parking, being built by the commercial team, needs to be constructed first in order to create the development pad for the affordable housing. The affordable housing cannot apply for the federal tax credit financing, which is the final step in the funding process and is essential to the project's success, until that parking garage is close to completion and because the tax credit financing requires that projects commence construction within 180 days of receiving funding. This means that the commercial will start construction first, and there will be a lag between the completion of the commercial building and the housing building. And the occupancy of these two buildings have to be independent of each other for those financial considerations. Given this phasing issue, it is possible that in a worst-case scenario, the commercial project could be built and tenanted while an empty podium may exist on city land where the affordable project was supposed to go, which would be counter to the city's interests and contributions of land to this project. To resolve this issue, staff worked diligently with the applicant team to propose options to create assurances that would see the units built. And I have to say, we made a lot of progress. So the four bullet points here outline the assurances that staff sought and that the development team partially agreed to. The first of which is the secondary deposit of $3 million to be paid at the garage building permit issuance to cover staff and pre-development costs if we have to go to the third and fourth bullet point. And this deposit is intended to be a deposit, so it would be returned if the residential project moves forward without any hiccups. The second assurance would be a true-up contribution at certificate of occupancy of the commercial building or the first tenant of the commercial building. And the difference here lies in the amount of that contribution. Staff proposes that the applicant pay $10 million at that stage, and the applicant feels more comfortable proposing the $3.5 million as outlined in the staff report. The third assurance would be to explore alternative plans for affordable housing that would make it more feasible. And finally, should all else fail, the plans and all the documents would revert to the city for the city's land to explore an alternative market-rate development project. Ultimately, I do want to note that the city's interest lies in seeing the units built and occupied. I don't think the city is really interested in the money. However, if the residential project is successful, the deposit of $3 million would be returned, and the $10 million or the $3.5 million would never have to be paid. Our preferred outcome is to see the units built. However, should something happen to negate that possibility, the contributions from the development team would be a way of assuring units in a future project. I also want to note that staff proposes and recommends that a CPI escalator be added to these projects, and that's basically the Consumer Price Index annual increase that would allow for the contributions to occur later into the future at the rate at which they would be appropriate for that time. And I will go into that in a minute in terms of how that affects the project's schedule. So the second key discussion topic for tonight is the project's schedule. And this table included in this slide was also provided in the staff report that lists the key project milestones and also describes the staff-proposed and the applicant-proposed timelines with buffers. The first step in the process is getting a building permit submitted. And as you can see here, the gap starts with that first step, and the difference between the staff-proposed schedule and the applicant-proposed schedule is already a year. And as you go further down the different milestones, the gap increases from here on. The second step in the process, which is the building permit issuance for the garage and commercial building, the one that is proposed by staff is based on other applications that were processed within these timelines, such as the Kiku Crossing project as well as the Verkata building, and based on conversations with the building official. The city has also agreed to commit in writing to be expeditious in permit routing and review times as the applicant team or the development team has expressed concerns about meeting these timelines. And the city would also be happy to do interim meetings and make sure the project stays on these kind of schedules. The third and fourth milestones here, which is completion of the garage, applying for the funding, and getting the residential building permit issued. The phasing of these makes it a little more complicated as the residential cannot seek funding until the garage is built. These two steps are the most critical for the city, and we do acknowledge that it may take the Alta team a couple of rounds to seek that funding, and therefore, we built in some buffers around that, such as 12 months. The applicant team proposes 24 months for the buffer. Once funding is obtained, the residential project must start construction within six months, and it is anticipated would take two years to fully build and occupy. I also wanted to note that these timelines are based on October 2024 entitlement dates, which is right around the corner and pretty much infeasible at this point. And so these timelines are likely to slip by at least four to six months further, depending on council direction tonight. The other key context that I want to highlight relating to the project's schedule are the commitments made by the city in the 2023 to 2031 housing element, which is to deliver housing units at this site within this cycle. Ideally, the units would be built and occupied by 2031. However, the units could still count towards the regional housing needs allocation for the city in this cycle if the building permits are issued by 2031. The 10-year development agreement timelines in the ENA were seen as staff as being the outside dates to half the that it may take the Alta team a couple of rounds to seek that funding, and therefore we built in some buffers around that, such as 12 months. The applicant team proposes 24 months for the buffer. Once funding is obtained, the residential project must start construction within six months, and it is anticipated would take two years to fully build and occupy. I also wanted to note that these timelines are based on October 2024 entitlement dates, which is right around the corner and pretty much infeasible at this point. And so these timelines are likely to slip by at least four to six months further, depending on council direction tonight. The other key context that I want to highlight relating to the project schedule are the commitments made by the city in the 2023 to 2031 housing element, which is to deliver housing units at this site within this cycle. Ideally, the units would be built and occupied by 2031. However, the units could still count towards the regional housing needs allocation for the city in this cycle if the building permits are issued by 2031. The 10-year development agreement timelines in this in the ENA was seen as staff as being the outside dates to have the project built and constructed. However, the applicants see it differently, as you can see in the summary of when the the staff proposed and the applicant proposed schedule would deliver the units. Under staff's proposal, under the optimal scenario or the preferred scenario, the project would be permitted by 2029 and built by 2031. However, if there were unforeseen issues or delays with buffers, it's possible to have the units permitted by 2031 and built by 2034. In contrast, the applicant's proposal could see the units permitted by 2030 or 2031 and built by 2032 or 2033, but with buffers could push out the delivery of those units by 2037, which would be 13 years from now. Thus, the options before council is whether the affordable units should be permitted and constructed in this housing cycle, and that's with or without buffers, or should the affordable units at least receive construction permits within this housing cycle, or is the council comfortable with pushing out the dates even further? Should council give us direction tonight to extend the ENA, staff would work to release the initial study and mitigated negative declaration for public review and comment in the in the coming month, work closely with the development team to finalize the agreements and the documents. And if all the negotiations from here on go smoothly, then we could potentially be looking at Planning Commission public hearing in December this year or January of next year, and council public hearings between January and March of 2025. This concludes staff's presentation, and Rachel and I and others on our team are available to answer questions. I believe the applicant team is all here to present as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, do we want to do public comment, Martin, before we go into the?
I believe, Madam Mayor, we're going to take the applicant's presentation now, and then we'll move into public comment.
Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Do you have a clicker for the? We're prepared for the clicker right now, but we can advance the slides for you. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for giving us the opportunity to continue the discussion on our public-private partnership we call bespoke. My name is Preston O'Connell. I'm with the applicant team. I only have 10 minutes, so I'm going to try and compress four years of conversations into this presentation, but I'll do my best. This is meant to be a collaboration, so please don't hesitate to call the applicant team at any point tonight, just to clarify any points on what's been discussed. As staff noted, we're here tonight to hopefully find a way forward on two items raised by staff. One is to provide additional financial assurances for the affordable housing if the office is is seeking an occupancy permit for its first tenant, and to get to a schedule that provides for housing within this housing cycle. Both of these requests are new and came up nearly two and a half years into our three-year negotiating period and were not reflected in the term sheet that was presented to this council and reaffirmed last May. If we could go to the next slide. That all said, we've worked tirelessly with staff to find an accommodation, and we're here tonight willing to move forward with option number two for the assurances and option number two for the schedule with buffers, as noted in the staff report. We think, just looking at the assurances, that what we can provide for within the context of our our project feasibility is about a $3 million deposit that would go up at the building permit issuance. And then, as staff noted, if for some reason, by the time we're getting to our first occupancy permit of the office, that we would put up another 3.5 million for a total of 6 million, 6.5 million dollars. That is new assurances that have not been discussed before. The one part that we're not supportive of, and it was a concept that we found out in the staff report, was this idea of a CPI increase. We've always been talking about fixed dollar amounts, and that is very important to us in terms of being able to maintain project feasibility and financing. That all said, in totality, that $6.5 million is really is roughly a 3X increase to the just the cash component of what we had put into the original deal, and is frankly a big stretch for our team to get to that point. On the schedule side, option number two is a schedule that reflects working back and forth with staff, trying to listen on what their goal is of trying to get housing within this cycle. And we think with that target schedule that we've revised, which gets us to a building permit issuance in 2030, which is actually a year before the end of the housing cycle and substantial completion in 2032, it acknowledges this request that's come up fairly recently as a way to kind of make that accommodation. In totality, that's roughly a four-year improvement of the schedule that we presented from our perspective last May with the city council, as noted on page 63, 61 of the staff report. If we could click to the next slide. So a little bit of a project history. I'll go through some of this quickly because I know staff touched on this already. But you know, where we started in this whole journey together was 52 units of of large family housing units and roughly 30, we have a type of there. It's actually 37. We just looked at it in the ENA, 37 dedicated parking stalls, which we will be providing. But now that's actually been improved. We're providing 25 additional stalls after hours, plus parking for the community and some of the commercial spaces. We've increased the affordable housing, you know, at your request last May from 52 units to 71 units. And where we stand today is a project that's basically ready to be approved. We're right there with our project application approval, as well as we're very close to having this sequel piece completed. And we spent, you know, a lot of time and effort to get to this place. If we could, thank you. Go to the next slide. You know, some of the things that are being discussed tonight, we've tried to be just brutally transparent from the beginning on. You know, one of the things was this tethering of the infrastructure of the of the block. You know, assembling a whole city block is challenging. It comes with, you know, it's it's trade-offs, if you will. And one of those things is we have to deliver a certain amount of infrastructure to create an opportunity for both the vertical development of the commercial as well as the residential. That's something that we've been very transparent about from the beginning. In fact, we made sure that staff reiterated that in the staff report, which is noted on page three from last year's presentation to you all, where we said, once we've put up all the money, we've brought the infrastructure, we've done all the things that we said we would do with our term sheet, we need to decouple our the pathway forward, because that's what it will take for us to get financing with our our lender. And so I think this this assurance is now kind of tethers tethers us back together. But I think what we can do is we can find common ground with that option, too, of providing the financial assurances that the city was looking for. And then on the timeline, please, what we also articulated was that it was really 10 years, and it was known in the staff report, to get to multiple rounds of funding, which in our timeline that we're putting forward, we're able to to get that inside of the 10 years and in this housing cycle element. And that's a four-year improvement from where we were roughly last May. If you go to the next slide. I'll just touch on this briefly. I think, you know, this what this speaks to is what is the city getting versus what we're getting? I think, you know, this is a good summary provided by a consultant that shows that basically, when we started with the original deal, the city was getting a lot. And now what we're doing is we're increasing that by another $6.5 million, which is noted is is almost a 300% increase from where we started, totaling close to $22 million. If for some reason, the affordable housing isn't financed by the time we're looking for our first occupancy permit, that's excluding roughly $8 million of impact fees, of which there's 5.6 of that is affordable housing funds to be used elsewhere. If we go to the next slide. This is a just a quick clarity on the schedule of how those new deposits and assurances would work. So we had $2.9 million that we're always planning to put into a deal that would be used to keep the entitlements moving forward, keep the predevelopment costs moving forward. And then if there's anything left over, it could be used for the vertical. Now, when we get to building permit issuance, we'd put up another $3 million deposit, which we hope to get back. Hopefully, this is a non-issue, as everyone points out, but we have to account for it. And then when we get to the first occupancy permit for the first office tenant, if for some reason, the affordable housing hasn't been financed at that point, we would put up another $3.5 million. So that's that's a total of 9.4 in total of cash, of which $6.5 million of that is is all new, really, in the last kind of six months of conversation with city staff. If you go to the next slide. Thank you. So how did we get to this point? There's been a lot of back and forth, as staff pointed out. We've we've really tried our best genuinely to acknowledge what staff has asked, you know, also being genuine and putting forward a project that is financeable and feasible. The $6.5 million was a number that was presented to us by staff a couple of weeks ago that we can we can work within. And the hope is that obviously we get that back if this financing moves forward. But if not, it sits there with the city to be used once we've kind of exhausted all options. And we're going to be working shoulder-to-shoulder with the city and the staff whole way through this process to get that hopefully accomplished. If we could just move. On the permitting side, I think, you know, obviously, as staff noted, this is where we may have a slightly different perspectives. What we're trying to do here is kind of contextualize our real experience, not only with this city, but actually other cities, too. So a project of this nature is is very different than maybe some of the ones it's being compared against. For example, we have to go subterranean to provide the parking. We have to do a mass timber project, which hasn't really been done in the city before, so it's a learning curve for everyone. We have multiple parties to coordinate with. So we have to coordinate with Alta. We have to coordinate with self-help for the elderly on what they're built out. There's a whole bunch of coordination that has to happen that you normally have to do, that didn't have to happen in a project like Kikue or even Verkata, which was a more traditional build. If you look at just three of the projects that we're working on in this city, it took Brookline, as an example, 20 months from when a permit was permit package was brought in until when it was approved. You know, Drager's, it took, you know, four months just to hear back on a first round of of comments. You know, that's that's not a dig on the city staff. We know they're working super hard. That's pretty common in most cities, actually, what we're seeing these days because of how stressed staff is. So I think what we're trying to do is just be realistic in this revised schedule to make sure that we're successful. The last thing we want to be doing is coming here every single time there's a speed bump in the process. And so from our viewpoint, based on real experience, you know, it's going to take 18 to 24 months to get that permit in in a way that's thoughtful and works, especially the mass timber component and all the coordination with the parties. And then just looking at precedent projects within the city that are more reflective of this type of project, that frankly, less complex, you know, it's taking anywhere from 18 to 24 months. If you go to the next slide. So I think most of this has been touched on. I think the key points here is that we, based on this new ask of getting to the city's goal of getting a target, a realistic target date of getting a building permit issuance that would count towards this housing cycle, this project accomplishes that by December of 2030. In fact, we really just need to get there by December 2031. So there's even a year buffer in this, which is good. And then we can get the units produced. And if we go to the last slide. What does this project offer? Well, it has close to $22 million in a financial package to the city, of which $9.4 million of that is in cash, assuming the affordable housing doesn't move forward, and a material amount of infrastructure. You know, one of the benefits of this partnership together is that us building the infrastructure for the affordable housing means that they don't have to apply for it, and their financing sources that everyone depends upon, which makes them more competitive than the project down the street that may have that same infrastructure in it. So there's a strategic advantage to them with us being involved versus us not being involved. Also, one of the things that we have is the ability to be a beneficiary of some of that commercial density. If we were not part of this, there would be really no one there to be to buy that or pay for it. And so that helps towards the financial contribution. And then now, we're providing another $6.5 million of cash contribution if the affordable housing doesn't move forward by the time we're asking for occupancy permit, and a timeline that's four years sooner. So let's not let a great project for the community fail tonight. You know, we've worked really hard to come up with these compromises, and and we can stay on supplying behind options number two for both the schedule and the assurances, with the exception of the CPI increases, which we weren't even really aware of until last Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let us open it up for public comment.
Ms. Madam Mayor, so we are now moving into public comment. This is for item number two on the agenda. If you are attending in person and would like to speak on this item, please provide me with the yellow request to speak slip at your earliest opportunity. If you're participating remotely, please raise your hand now. We will be calling the last speaker. So please ensure that you get your hand raised. If your hand is raised after we call the last speaker, you will your comments will not be taken. So we'll give you just a few moments to do that. So, Madam Mayor, I have a total of 10 requests to speak. So that would put our per council rules and guidelines, that'd be three minutes per speaker?
Yes.
So we'll begin with our speakers in house first. So when I call your name, if you could please line up to my right, that would be greatly appreciated. Our first three speakers will be John Medina, Nels Delander, and Michael O'Neill.
Really didn't do myself a favor by not bringing my glasses. Good evening, everyone, mayor, council members, staff, members of the community. My name's John Medina. I'm a San Mateo resident. I'm also a business representative with the Fire Sprinkler Local Union. I've had an opportunity to have a few meetings with Harvest Properties, the developer. With me were representatives of the plumbers local, the electricians who are here tonight, and sheet metal workers. Between us, we have several hundred members who live here in San Mateo. We've had hoped here, we had hoped to be here today in support of this project, since we're certainly all in need of promised affordable housing and workforce housing. We also need this opportunity to work, even earning union wages. There are very few construction apprentices, even foremen. I can most all of us can agree that most of us can barely afford to rent, much less buy a home here in the city. I'm very concerned about this project, that there's no assurances that the majority of all the 20 different construction trades will be used. The apprentices from all of the programs will have an opportunity. I'm happy to hear that the there's hopeful to be a union general contractor might be used, since the carpenters are all here tonight. But I'm also very disappointed in the developer for the age-old divide to conquer tactics, pitting one or two of these trades against the other 18 crafts, and still considering it a union job. Without a greater commitment to all of the trades, millions in construction wages will not be recirculated into our local community. Since there is no assurance that the apprentices from our training program will be building this project, this means that there will be less opportunities or career pathways for all the San Mateo High School students and the just from the district, who a bunch of our trades just visited last week at their annual career fair. We're asking you guys to play some something into terms into this agreement with this developer that would make sure that every trade's apprentices will build this project, that every trade will have a greater opportunity to have local residents here on to build this project as well. It's just smart policy that would encourage the use of the local workforce and support the local workforce training programs, like our apprenticeship program. Thank you for listening and taking action on this item tonight.
Thank you. And just to announce that our final speaker on this item will be Leora. And our next three speakers will be Nels Delander, followed by Michael O'Neill and Edward Evans.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and city staff. My name is Nels Delander. I was born here in San Mateo, and I'm a representative of local 217 Carpenters Union of San Mateo County. The project at 445 South B Street is a great-sized development. It has the potential to change the lives for who live here in the community. The developer has committed a using a union signatory general contractor. That means the general contractor that the general contractor to all our carpenter crafts, from prail driving, concrete, framing, drywall, cabinetry, and more will be union contractors. Our union represents more than 70% of the workforce on the most projects. These are responsible contractors that pay area standard wages, healthcare benefits, utilizes the local hire, and promotes state-accredited apprenticeship programs. Everyone you see here in the vest today show the support for this project. Some might want this project expedited, but by doing so, you would potentially hurt this project to but this to do a vital economy. Our hopes is to help this get through this entitlement. I hope when the time comes, we could pass this project at 455 South B Street, knowing that not only this project will be great for the community, but this project will give good jobs for workers to keep to take care of themselves and their families. I am in full support of this project. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Michael O'Neill, Edward Evans, and Rick Bonilla.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council and staff. My name is Michael O'Neill, and I'm going to make it really brief, I hope. I just turned 69, and I've been a San Mateo County resident for the last 65 years. So I grew up in Belmont, lived in San Mateo, and I've also lived in Redwood City. So when I came, when I grew up in Belmont, I was over there before Lauri Dale was ever built. And I was fortunate enough to work on some of the projects in Redwood Shores and Foster City. So anyway, I've been a local member of Carpenters Local 217 for 25 years now, and I'm also collecting my pension, my annuity, and my healthcare through the carpenters' union. I am retired. I am retired, and I still, I also do have a 401K, but I'm fortunate enough that I don't have to use that yet. So I plan on using that in my later years in life. Anyhow, I support this project on 445 South B Street. It is a great project for the city of San Mateo. And I'd also like to say that the carpenters' union, I also did go through their apprenticeship program when I was younger. I completed the four-year apprenticeship program. Proud to say that. And the carpenters actually have some mass timber jobs going on right now in San Mateo County. So we have training, ongoing training for that project. And I truly believe that we could do that project without any problems. So this project is going to be a great project for the city of San Mateo and is going to provide good union jobs, hopefully, for the carpenters that live locally in our area. I support this project, and I hope you do too also. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Edward Evans, followed by Rick Bonilla, and Max Shamkow.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council. My name's Ed Evans. I am the Senior Field Representative of Carpenters Local 217 here in San Mateo County. I'm also a resident of San Mateo. Just wanted to let you know that, like the last speaker said, the carpenters' union stands in strong support of the bespoke project. We feel it's good for downtown San Mateo. I think we can all agree on that. It's desperately needed, and it checks all of the right boxes for our downtown core. Prevailing wage will apply to the whole project, guaranteeing a level bidding playing field for all the crafts, okay? However, as you know, the carpenters are not affiliated with the building trades anymore. And a big reason for that is that we got tired of sitting on our hands, waiting, and losing. So the carpenters negotiated early with the developer for a letter of intent to use a union general contractor. What that does is it guarantees that almost 70% of the work performed on this project, that's pile drivers all the way to the carpenter that is going to hang the last door or the last medicine cabinet. It's going to guarantee almost 70%. And also important to the carpenters' union is it's going to protect the carpenters' work from other crafts that will come and try to take it and try to claim it as their own. We're tired of that, too. So the carpenters' philosophy is that we organize relentlessly. We get in early and we negotiate from strength to strength. This developer chose to partner with the carpenters because they know that we and our signatory employers offer the most real and tangible value in construction, more than any other combination of unions combined. Tonight, we respectfully ask that you direct staff to pursue option two under both the substantive and the scheduling options. I don't know how much more I can say in favor of the project, the affordable housing. And as far as the timeline is concerned, I understand both sides. But also, as one of the earlier speakers said, we are in a very volatile economy. Money is obviously very expensive right now. So you can't blame a developer for being a little bit cautious, asking for a little bit of wiggle room. After all, it took, what, at least three years just to get to this point? So three years, another three years if it takes that long. I don't think that's too long to wait. But in fact, should the economy turn around, which we all hope it will, it doesn't mean that the project couldn't be built sooner. And I guarantee you, with a union general contractor, it will get built quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Rick Bonilla, followed by Max Shamkow, and John Neapalo.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having us here tonight. I stand here tonight in support of this project. My name is Rick Bonilla, former mayor of the city of San Mateo. And I first started looking at and thinking and talking about this project in 2020, way before it was even discussed at any sort of a formal meeting, when the twinkle in the eye was, well, we have that parking lot. Where can we find, we have these other city-owned properties in the city. Where can we find places to build housing? Because then, just as now, the need is dire for affordable housing and for market-rate housing. We need it all. So let me just start with a little idiom. It's an old one, you may recognize it. Don't count your chickens before the eggs hatch. And I think it's pertinent because in this case, certain outcomes are being looked at and may be thought to be inevitable. And I have to say that our environment for construction has not been one of inevitability. Things have been doubtful. Things have been shaky. Developers, contractors, working members of all the unions have had a tough time making ends meet, making sure that we're able to, bless you, making sure we're able to do the things that we need to do in order to continue to be a viable place, not only here in San Mateo, but in the entire Bay Area. And that's really about the extent of my reach for now. But I want to say that with all that said, I believe that the staff's proposals on the two options that are being laid out here do push the project towards the edge of infeasibility, both economically and realistically. I would choose to err on the side of making sure we're going to be able to get these things that we all, I think, want to have reinvigorated downtown. We want B Street to come back to life on that block. And we want to see that affordable housing. We want to see self-help for the elderly have a new place to be. These are all very meaningful things in San Mateo. Let's don't endanger that. Let's vote to move this project forward as, and as you know, the developer, the proposal here, the applicant, has been working hard with the city for a number of years here to make this happen. So I hope that we're able to say that on a substantive option number two is acceptable, and I urge direct staff to work on option two for that and the scheduling option, also number two. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next two speakers in person will be Max, followed by John Neapalo.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable council members. My name is Max Shamkow. I'm a business representative of IBW Local 617. Lifelong resident of San Mateo, born and raised in District 2, North Central San Mateo. Proud resident of District 3. I'm here tonight representing several hundred local families who are members of my union, as those families who belong to the sheet metals union as well, plumbers, and sprinkler fitters. We make up about, as the brother mentioned from the carpenters, they represent about 70% of the work. We represent the other 30. This means many of our members could be employed on the project earning several millions in construction wages and benefits and community reinvestments. I had not really expected, I'm a longtime listener, first-time caller here, so didn't expect to be here tonight. But on behalf of my union members, I showed up. We have been to talk with Harvest Properties in relation to this project. We expected, particularly since this is supposed to be a public-private partnership that will be covered by prevailing wages, that we could reach an understanding that would ensure our local workforce would be on this project and our apprentices would help build it. Local hires support local businesses. Local businesses generate local tax revenue that the city thrives and operates on. It's important to remember that although this is a prevailing wage job, and that's generally a good thing for the worker, it does not ensure that all local workers will be employed from San Mateo and from surrounding cities and that our apprentices will be on these projects. It's important to keep in mind that there are hundreds and hundreds of open complaints filed in numerous jurisdictions since cheating on prevailing wages by non-union contractors is so prevalent. As a business representative of my union, I actively work on labor compliance on public works projects. And yes, we find and pursue the cheaters who misclassify, underpay their workers. This is not accusation of Harvest Properties. This is just a statement that I'm making of things that have happened in the past on prevailing works projects. There's been false claims that having an agreement with mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and sprinkler fitters trades would drive the cost up 10%. That's outlandish and unmerited. It's ridiculous, repeated in the echo chambers of development firms that would rather utilize underscaled, undertrained, and underpaid mechanical, electrical, plumber, and sprinklers. The option to have open shop contractors opens up the road to low-road, out-of-town contractors are typical of this kind of cheat on prevailing wage jobs. I'm going to have to get cut short here. Basically, I love to see this project go forward. I'm a proponent of it with use of union labor on all sides.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be John, and we'll move to our virtual environment.
Mayor and City Council, I'm Johnny Newpala. I've lived here in San Mateo my entire life. I'm also an electrician apprentice and for IBW Local 617 in San Mateo. I'm one apprentice out of 167 members of my union who live right here in San Mateo, and I'm speaking for them also. I'm not completely sold on the project in front of you, but I do like that it will have affordable housing as part of it. What I do know is that the developer is denying the opportunity for people like me to work on this project. This is supposed to be a public-private partnership. If that is indeed true, then why won't this developer commit to, to commit to a community workforce training agreement with my union? If they do commit to community workforce training agreement, it will result in apprentices like me being utilized on the project. Their refusal to make that commitment means fewer opportunities for San Mateo's at-risk youth, women, veterans, and minority workers who need what I've been given, which is an opportunity and ticket into the middle class. I'm asking you to stand up for our city's residents who need an opportunity to not only live here, but to work here and help build our beautiful city. Hiring local apprentices ensures that my apprenticeship program can continue to onboard more people like me looking for a chance to break through economic hardship. Please make part of this deal a requirement that there must be apprentices from all trades on this project and that the developer agrees to a community workforce training agreement. Thanks for my time, and thanks for listening to me.
Thank you. We will now move to our virtual environment. Our next speaker will be Ally. Ally, please unmute your mic.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Ally Saperman. I'm calling on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition. The Housing Action Coalition had the opportunity to review this project, and we're proud to support it. As you know, we've been really involved in the housing element, and we are excited about seeing this affordable, these affordable units built. They are much needed to meet the city's RENA targets. Additionally, we're excited that the bespoke project provides prevailing wage, which is the state standard for providing labor protections on projects. This precedent was set, starting with Buffy Wicks on AB 2011, after years of labor negotiations, and I recommend that the city looks to that precedent. With rising costs of development and lack of predictability with funding for affordable housing development, it is critical that the city is flexible with the developer and supports option two. Staff's option one makes this project infeasible. And if the council truly cares about getting these affordable units built, then you should support option two today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Ken Chan. Ken, please unmute your mic.
Good evening, San Mateo City Council members. My name is Ken Chan, and I'm the senior organizer with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with communities and their leaders to produce and preserve quality affordable homes. I'd first like to thank staff for all their hard work in putting together their report and presentation on tonight's item. On behalf of HLC, I'd like to express our support for the bespoke proposal by a nonprofit affordable housing developer with around 50 years of experience in Alta Housing. I'd also like to emphasize that for folks, especially your community members, to be and to both stay well, both physically and mentally, for your children to grow and flourish, we need to ensure that all of us have housing that we can count on. A stable home anchors our health and provides the ladder for future success. Our children won't get very far if we don't plan for their housing needs and the needs of the people in our communities. The bespoke proposal can be a part of those plans. Where of the 71 new homes, 44 can be affordable for your city's most vulnerable families. In addition, by allowing your most vulnerable residents a chance to live near their places of work and entertainment, you'll be helping to enhance your city's downtown vibrancy. But most importantly, you can help facilitate the creation of a stable home for at least 44 of your city's most vulnerable families. At the end of the day, how you choose to respond to the needs of your community matters, and you have the opportunity to make a positive impact on your community. We urge you to approve a deal term that gives Alta Housing the best chance for success by pursuing option two. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And as was announced earlier, our final speaker on this item will be Leora. Leora, please unmute your mic.
Good evening, San Mateo City Council. Good evening, San Mateo City Council. My name is Leora Tanwakko Ross, speaking on behalf of Peninsula for everyone. We have 484 San Mateo residents who are housing supporters, and we all speak in strong support of this proposal and option number two. I worked in San Mateo for five years, and as part of my time there, I worked on the bottom floor of an 100% affordable housing building. And the thing I remember the most is when the kids would come home from school. At the end of the day, they would like run in, you know, get in the elevator, go up the stairs, greet their families, and it was just such energy and joy. And I thought, these kids have an opportunity to go to these schools and be in these neighborhoods, and without this housing, they never would have had that. Some of the kids, you know, had really rough upbringings, and so the stable housing, the stable, deeply affordable housing, like really just changed their entire lives. And so when we're thinking about this proposal tonight, I want you to think about these three-bedroom units, two-bedroom, three-bedroom units that will house these children, these young adults who will grow up to serve their communities and really be able to contribute because of the stable upbringing that they have. So I want to thank staff, and I want to thank, you know, all of the city staff that has been working with the applicant on this. It sounds like a very arduous process, and I want to urge you all to move forward with option two. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
All right, thank you very much. I will close the public comment on this item and bring it back to council, who would like to start our discussion. Councilmember Hedges.
While we're waiting on the questions, it's not in my mind whether we do this project or not. It's at what timeline we do it.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, that's what I'm looking for. I think on the first one, I'm fine with that. But one of the questions I do have, maybe the developer can answer this, is that I don't see Alta Housing here tonight. And I saw something that I read along the way in reading the volume of material here that Alta wasn't going to the Housing and Community Development Committee with the county to ask for funding help, and they have quite a bit of money. I just don't understand that, why they wouldn't do that.
I think Alta Housing is here and...
Oh, good. I didn't see Carlos. That's who I know with Alta.
Hi, my name is Jessines. Hi, I'm the project manager for the affordable housing portion from Alta Housing. Carlos is on the line. I believe he's virtual tonight, but I'm happy to answer that question. We will be going to the county of San Mateo for funds. Usually that happens after entitlements. So we will be leveraging the funds from the county.
Okay, thank you. We have a lot if the state gives us money, but we have money anyway. Thank you. Well, I do have one more question. In this timeline, do you think you can deliver by 2031 with the housing?
So after a discussion with our design team, we believe the delivery by 2031 wouldn't be feasible for affordable housing. It'll take at least 18 months for us to submit a building permit, and I believe it's 12 months on the option one schedule. Given that the schedule is based off an October entitlements, which is unlikely to happen at this moment, it's very unlikely, it's pretty much impossible that we will be able to complete the project by 2031.
What about permitting? Can you do that?
We can, yes. As the option two that's proposed, we can probably permit it by 2032.
2032 or 2031?
Sorry, 2031, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, thank you. Makes me feel better.
Are you finished with your comments and questions?
Not quite.
Okay.
One of the things I do want to say after listening to the comments, I came out of the building trades. They gave me a way out of a neighborhood that you probably wouldn't want to live in. And so I'm very high on, since this is a prevailing wage job, and since I think you actually save money with union work, because my understanding of the way prevailing wage works, the developer who's non-union has to pay for the benefits in cash if they don't have benefits, which leaves them without the deductibility of benefits which union employers have into their trust funds. So I would really want to see that we have local hire. I know our building trades apprentices, many of them come from at-risk families, and they're actually focusing on that. It's giving young people in this city a leg up to a good living. And so I would like to see every craft be unionized on this project, and I'd like to see them working with the contractor to make that happen. If not, then I would like to see PLA in the future and put into the requirements on this project. So I think I'm done for right now, but I'll reserve time later.
Okay, great. Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you, through the mayor. So we heard a number of public comments tonight that seemed to... That talked to agreement, you know, a potential letter agreement with one union and that perhaps doesn't allow for other unions to pursue a particular community training agreement. I wonder if the applicant or staff or both could speak to the current understanding of the situation and whether there's flexibility to pursue something different or if we're locked in.
Through the mayor, that would have to be the applicant. The staff has not been privy to the negotiations between the development team and the unions.
Okay, so perhaps someone from the applicant would like to respond to that question. Thank you.
So I think on the labor side of it, as you know, we have a prevailing wage requirement. We've been working on this project with a, you know, union GC. Harvest has a really deep history of working with the unions, and this is a pretty complicated project already. You know, our thought is hopefully we get there with all the unions at the end of the day, but I think right now, what we have on the table is what works for us, and, you know, we're not saying no by any means, but we want to keep the path that we're on. This is already a pretty complex deal. I think we have our history that speaks for ourselves.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
So I think I'll just give comments on the options we have before us at this time, which would be, you know, in my opinion, for options to, for substantive options and for scheduling options. So option two for both. And my reasoning for that would be that I appreciate effort on the developers' end to increase assurance that we'll be able to put affordable housing on city land, even if things don't go according to plan, which they very well may. Given the city's interest in completing a project with housing within this housing element cycle, it certainly seems too costly and counterproductive to consider option three for substantive options and starting over. And the applicant has indicated a number of reasons why they won the initial ENA in the first place, and I think those should be considered. I think that explains my interest in number two for substantive. And for scheduling, I would just say that, you know, while of course we want this project to get done as soon as possible, we do have a need within the current framework as proposed to get more tax credit financing, and we are not in control of that timeline. The city has given extensions to other developers over the last year or so due to suboptimal conditions for financing. So I think it's reasonable to consider among, you know, in addition to the complexity of the project noted, some additional buffer timeline to complete the project. This will still give the city a chance of at least some credit toward housing in this housing cycle with the understanding that, you know, we, that it's, some of this timeline is out of the developers' control and the city's. So with regard to the union agreement situation, I'm... I'm a little concerned about opening up another Pandora's Box at this point, frankly. Perhaps other councilmembers have clarifying questions that might help us understand through deliberation whether there's a path forward there. So I'll leave my comments there at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Well, I want to start by saying, you know, I am so grateful to have all of the partners that have come together in this process, including the very tireless work from our city staff, who I think have been great champions for the community. And to have our former mayor, Rick Bonia, here to, you know, to participate in the public process and who's been shepherding along this idea for many years now is, I think, very appropriate. So good to see you, former mayor. This project is, you know, of great importance to me on a personal level. I know that many of us share a deep love for self-help for the elderly, and I want to lift up the role that that organization plays in this project and the direct service and cultural richness that it brings to the city of San Mateo, serving some of our lowest-income seniors who are living with linguistic isolation and far from their place of birth and seeking community and connection through our, you know, through our partnership and through the programs that are offered there. And that organization feeds thousands every single week throughout the entire county and literally helped sustain our community in a time when so many were facing food insecurity, including many of our brothers and sisters in labor who benefited from food boxes as well. So I, you know, while I wish I had a magic wand and could, you know, could see this project built tomorrow, to me, it's very important to get the terms right, and even if that means slowing down. And as I think our other councilmembers and the applicants have spoken to, there are many conditions that are far outside of our control. And with the multiple rounds, sometimes two or even three applicant rounds that it requires for stock financing for affordable housing, it seems quite appropriate to me to consider a longer timeline and forward-thinking terms that will make a solidified agreement regardless of who's our city manager, which we hope it's still Alex, and our future council. So, you know, looking to an extended timeline, I think, is prudent and reasonable, knowing that there's going to be shifts in leadership, executive leadership at the staff level, financial volatility and unknowns, and just bureaucracy, right? This is government. So I would certainly support option two for those reasons. I wanted to ask for specificity in terms of circling back to self-help for the elderly. I was very pleased to see a commitment for $1 a year and discussions of it being a permanent home for self-help, and I wanted to make sure that we're codifying those two things together, that it is, in fact, $1 a year permanently. That's my understanding? Yes? Nodding? Okay. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that's explicit.
Did you want to say something?
Through the mayor, if I could also clarify, so my understanding is that self-help for the elderly currently has a lease, is teneting like the Central Park space. The project's schedule, like depending on when it's built, would also affect what happens to self-help for the elderly in the interim, so that would also be a factor to consider in the project's schedule.
Certainly, and I know that we've been talking about extending that lease for five years with the possibility of extending another...
We just extended it up to 10 years.
Up to 10 years, okay. Great, with the possibility of extension. Yes. So, you know, my sincere intention is to create a clarity and explicit agreement that self-help for the elderly will always have a home in San Mateo, right? That we are providing assurance to our community that that nonprofit service organization will always have a place in our city, whether it's at Central Park or it's in this future development, which I hope we will all see come to fruition, and I think that we're all aiming for that to happen. You know, in terms of the financial assurances, I wanted to seek more clarity, honestly, between options one and two. For me, option three is, you know, is out of consideration. But, you know, I think that it's, I would like to better understand sort of the delta between options one and two, because the, you know, I just want to make sure that we're all working with the same abundance of information.
Through the mayor, I can take a stab at that and attempt at that. So roughly, the city's contributions towards the commercial project are estimated to be between 13.5 to 14.5 or 14.75 million dollars, and therefore, while the commercial team is contributing 2.9 million dollars at the front end of the project, towards the affordable housing project, we felt that should the commercial project be built, and we don't have residential units, that $10 million would account for that difference. The $3 million deposit that's anticipated in the middle of the process is really intended for staff time and costs should the project need significant revisions to make a project viable, and is not intended to directly contribute towards affordable housing units.
I see. So just to bottom line it, I think it's important for us to understand if, in this very outside marginal chance that everything falls through, what does the city walk away with between option one and option two in terms of having a, having resources to build affordable housing, if not at that project or somewhere else?
Through the mayor, at that point, should the residential project not be successful, the city would have the land and the parking garage improvements on it, and we would have the $3 million secondary deposit to use towards entitlement costs or staff costs, and the $3.5 million from the developer as a true-up contribution towards affordable housing. One option could be for the city to use that project entitlement and convert it into a market rate project, so instead of doing 100% affordable unit, you know, if that is infeasible, if financing cannot be secured, then could the city use that land to do 71 units, out of which there would be 20% or 25% inclusionary units, but have the rest of them as market rate development.
So the delta between option one and option two is 3.5 million. So basically, if you go with option two right now, the developer, if it just happens that everything falls through, basically, then the city would get $6.5 million, its land, and the improvements of the underground parking garage and the foundation. That's what option two does. Option one would be that you'd get a higher amount, but it's the same thing, but you'd get 10 million, so it's a $3.5 million difference.
Through the mayor, just a slight correction, it's a $6.5 million difference.
Sorry, $6.5 million, yeah, you're right, because we're already getting the $3 million before that. Got it.
The three, part of the $3 million, or is it 2.9 million, is just first off, time that's already spent, right?
The 2.9 million is a contribution to the project that Alta's working on, for entitlement costs, and then subsequent to that payment, that's where the $3 million secondary deposit comes in at building permit, and then the difference between one and two is that last payment, if commercial gets CVO, but the affordable housing hasn't gone vertical, the difference there is the 10 million versus 3.5 million. That's really the difference, it's just that, it's the last step.
Okay. So, I mean, I think that... I think that there's a lot of work that's gone into this, and, you know, and I guess I would like to hear from the applicant. There, you know, we're still far apart in terms of managing the worst-case scenario, right? And what the city would be able to do in building, you know, building affordable homes in that worst-case scenario, and getting, you know, having us, having us with, having a viable option and a path that could bring us closer to our goal of building affordable housing. Yeah, I would like to hear from the applicant, because if we can get closer together, I think that, especially if CPI is off the table, then I do think this is an opportunity to, like, give it our best shot.
Yeah, so I think just to be clear, our understanding, a lot of this has been floated over the last couple of weeks, is that the $3 million deposit would go up, the option, I'm going to clarify two versus one, just from our viewpoint.
Sure.
Is the $3 million would go up at the building permit issuance for the substructure, the kind of common infrastructure, right? And it sits there as collateral. And then at the end of the movie, after we've gone through all of the buffers and everyone's tried super hard to get affordable housing produced, because certainly we're all, that's our main goal, is if we're asking for the first office tenant to move in, and that still doesn't happen, we're putting up another $3.5 million of money. So the city will have $6.5 million that it didn't have when we were selected or ever part of this deal up until the last six months, right? That's $6.5 million of new money to be used for the production of affordable housing, is how we hope that that gets used. That is a huge stretch for us. Like this, like we've worked so hard to get to this point. It's, just to be completely transparent, if this deal fell apart right now, your next best option doesn't provide anything like that, because you had this bid competitively. We competed against a number of other groups, and with the original deal, we had the best terms, and now we've sweetened that pot by 6.5. It's not like the commercial office market has gotten... It's not like the commercial office market has gotten materially better since we've been selected. It's gotten materially worse, and we haven't walked away from one thing that we've committed to.
Thank you. You know, I find the applicant's arguments very compelling. You know, when we started on this path, they said to us, we could move forward and build, you know, what was it, 30 some odd units on our own, and this would be a straightforward process. And we said, that's not what is in the best interest of the community. And they stretched themselves, sought out an affordable housing partner, and more than doubled the total number of units that would be produced for families. And not just, you know, studios and one-bedrooms, but actually family-friendly units. And I've seen, you know, I've seen these developers who are, you know, based in San Mateo, come to the table over and over again for, you know, for many community initiatives that had to do with protection of our city's sustainable infrastructure, and many other ballot initiatives that served the city's interests. And so, I really do see this deal coming together in a win-win-win, and I think that we've done a really great job managing the worst-case scenario, having assurances in place, and I feel comfortable moving forward with option two.
So, both twos?
Yes, I've already spoken to the schedule.
And what about the comment about the workforce agreement, community workforce agreement? Do you have any comments on that?
You know, I think that I would agree with Councilmember Lorraine that the establishment of prevailing wage provides for competitive bidding, and while I certainly hope that our partners can support an apprentice-friendly, labor-friendly project, 100%, that I'm not sure that we're in a position to mandate that. And I think the best way that we can do that is, are the steps that we've already taken, which is establishing a prevailing wage requirement for all of our partners.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Newsom.
May I ask you a clarifying question through the mayor? So I'd like to clarify on the project's schedule. When we are talking about option two, I think there was a little bit, at least of confusion on my part. Are we talking then about staff's proposed schedule, which would include delivery with or without the buffers by, or not delivery, but permit issuance with or without the buffers by 2031? Because I think the applicant's schedule with the buffers does not have permit issuance by 2031. So I want to make sure before we go through all the council members that we know which schedule we're looking at.
The option here.
So if you look on the screen in front of you guys right now, you have the staff-proposed buffers, which would include, that's the 2031. At the 10.2, if you look at the very bottom line, it's 10.25 years, so 2035. Or you have the developers, the applicant-proposed buffers, which is 12 years, 2036, 37.
And I think probably some of the confusion is, this option talks about construction permits, and there's not the similar on this schedule. So I think that's where maybe some of the...
And I see Preston, you had a question?
Absolutely, please.
Just to clarify, is option one 10.25 and option two 12?
I think, oh, sorry, man.
That's, I'm asking...
Yeah, so when we read, I guess when we've been commenting through this whole point, just we're all speaking the same language, we've always viewed that setting ourselves up for a target schedule that feels realistic, that gets to a building permit issuance, in our schedule will be December of 2030, which actually still has a buffer in of about a year, right? Naturally, before it wouldn't count in the housing cycle, is something that we can hopefully set ourselves up for. That shouldn't take away the applicant buffers, it's not applicant buffers, it's the buffers that have been put forward, those are time periods we're putting forward, but a lot of those buffers are, like, it's not like we just get them automatically, per se. Like, we have to go articulate, hey, look, this happened, none of us anticipated that, here's, you know, let's work together, because obviously going back even further certainly doesn't help. And so we want to make sure, and that's pretty common in every single development agreement we've seen, is to make sure that there's some buffers in there where if things come up, that we can be successful. And so I think if you looked at every single worst-case scenario, and what we're, the way we're thinking about option two is, yeah, it could be 12 years, but we think we have a realistic schedule there, and in order to get all the way out to 12 years, we've got to have some probably pretty good reasons, like, hey, we went to get the Lytec credit, and they're not open for business right now, so we got to wait till the next one. Or we went and we got it, and there was someone else that had just a better project, and we have to wait that out. I mean, those are, like, for example, that would, in that buffer schedule option two, that would give Alta, you know, roughly three rounds to go out and get affordable housing financing, which, you know, hopefully we do it sooner than that, but that's some of the stuff we don't control. So that's how we've thought about option two. Otherwise, we kind of take away any contingency. I mean, just like we're going to fail right out of the gate.
And can I just ask a clarifying question to staff? Then, the schedule that has, if you could put the other slide back up, the 10.25 at the bottom, how does that relate to what the options are here?
These are with the buffers. So this is getting the housing permitted. So if you look at the, one, two, three, the fourth row on the milestones, which is the residential building permit issuance. So the April 2029 is when, under the staff-proposed schedule, you could get residential building permits issued. And if you add all the buffers on the next column, that could be 2031. For the applicant-proposed schedule, that residential permit could be issued by December 2030, but if you add all the other columns, that's pushing it out to 2034. So, and I tried to summarize that in the next slide, which is with and without the buffers, what the schedule could look like. One way to think about the project's schedule is, what's the outside date that council would be comfortable putting as, you know, the final sort of end date that you could live with, with buffers? And then maybe without the buffers, what could be an optimal date that council would be comfortable with? And that way, we can work backwards and work with the applicant team to develop a more detailed project's schedule.
And then, I would just add one other thing, just for consideration, and that's, the city of San Mateo doesn't typically have an expedited permitting process, and so that's not something that you would see with our other larger developments, and you wouldn't see that even in projects with DA's development agreements. And so for this project, we are building into our terms a commitment to expedite the permitting for this project, which means that we would put it up in the queue when it comes in. We would have meetings instead of putting it through our permitting system, where we're able to do that. And so we would have conversations rather than rounds of permit review, and find other ways to expedite the review. And so for some of those things where we're building in buffers and permit review cycles, we're looking at ways to make the permitting for this one more streamlined. And we did that with Kiku. I don't know if it was written into the terms, but we did that with Kiku, and I believe it was successful. And so if we can, that might not take care of some of the marketing concerns that Preston brought up, but it would take care of some of the concerns that are typical in permitting and review cycles of larger development projects.
Sure.
So for me, the most important question, I think, is actually to Alta. Does the staff-proposed timeline allow for three funding cycles? Or is the applicant's timeline accommodating three cycles? Or both? Is that a factor? Because my understanding is that we need to be budgeting a minimum of three cycles for affordable housing financing. So that's what I want to see in this picture, is a distinction, if there is one.
Yeah, so the staff-proposed buffer actually doesn't account for three cycles, because of the type of project that we are, we are only really eligible and competitive for one cycle a year, the first application, which is why we have the 24 months, essentially ones in each year for the two cycles.
So for me, that provides an abundance of clarity and support for the applicant's extended timeline, because our own affordable housing partner is saying that the project would require, you know, conservatively, at least three rounds of applications, and that the staff-proposed timeline may not accommodate that potential.
Through the mayor, if I could clarify a little bit. So the current proposal for the seeking of the tax credit financing, the staff-proposed timeline suggests that it start in April 2028, and then gives a year to the affordable housing developer to get that financing, and then builds in 12 months, so two additional rounds of seeking that financing. So it's actually three or four, but I'll turn over to Rachel to add more.
Part of the confusion is because when we originally proposed the schedule, we were assuming that the applicant, that Alta could apply two times in one year. When we later clarified that, because of what Jesse just said, that in fact, they could only apply once a year, then, yes, I believe, I'm trying to do the math in my head, which is never a good idea. I believe what is happening here is there are two rounds assumed, essentially, to get us to 2035 here. So the reason why we left it this way is because this is the proposal that staff made. We didn't know at the time that there would only be one application opportunity per year. So effectively, what we're looking at is two rounds in the middle, in the staff-proposed buffer scenario.
I think that, maybe this helps the confusion, I think the option two is similar, like, the applicant-proposed schedule has the rounds for three based on a one-year per ability to apply, and that's an attachment. It's not identical to that, but it's close. So I think if we worked, that's an attachment to the staff report, like, that gets Alta what they need to get through three rounds, gives everyone what they need to get through the permitting, to acknowledge what Christina said. If we're, certainly if we go in and we submit, and we get comments back from the city, and we get a back, like, that will just naturally happen faster, but these are dates that, like, if we don't hit them, the thing blows up, right? And we stand to lose a lot. And so I think that's not what we're benchmarking to do better. This is what happens if things start to go wrong, right? Not our base case. And I think in the, at least the applicant-proposed schedule, what it does for us is it gets us the right permitting period to get us there in a successful way, based on precedents that we've had, gets us to a target funding round, I believe, in December of 2030, or sorry, gets us to a billing permit for the residential in 2030, which allows you to count for arena numbers. And even, that could even slip by a year, you still get it, right? Because it's 2031. And then there's the funding rounds for buffers that are articulated, and so maybe it's helpful to pull that up, might clarify, but it certainly works for us and hopefully acknowledges what...
So I think, just for clarity's sake, the options here that I would just put forward is the 2035 that staff has on the screen, or 2037. What would you like on the outside end? You're hearing from the affordable housing developers, saying that 2037 is for the additional rounds. We're looking at, staff is saying we probably get two rounds in the 2035. Correct me if I'm wrong. That is correct, from staff.
So that's what I've taken away from this conversation as well. And so just to underscore my position, is that I support the applicant's proposed timeline, because I think it's well-supported by Alta's assessment, that it will require, you know, possibly three rounds of applications, which I think is, you know, we have to rely on their expertise in this situation. And, you know, I live right, you know, right next to Brickline, which was a hole in the ground for a good two years, before anything was built. And, you know, we know, walking around our city, that delays can happen, and even under the best of circumstances and commitments from the city, there are so many factors that we can't control.
So can I ask a question out of turn? But my understanding and looking at the applicant proposal, was the two greatest areas of risk that you saw was the amount of time it would take to get permits, because you said that, you know, it was more complicated, it would take longer, and in the tax credit, as you mentioned, Councilmember Lee. So in terms of the expedited schedule, would it be possible not just to say we want to expedite, but to get very specific to say, this step is going to take 60 days, this step is going to take 90 days, this step is, and if it goes beyond that, then the buffers kick in? But I look at the, look at the two proposals, and they're sort of, it's, the disagreement seems to be more around how long it's going to take to get the permits obtained than the tax credits, but if the tax credits, to your point, if there are two rounds of tax credits that everybody can agree to, then if it takes longer, then we say, okay, it's everybody tried. But that we start with a quicker basis, am I understanding? But I think it would be very important for the city to have to be very specific, because I think it's fair for the applicant to say, here's what's happened in the past. We need to be a whole lot more specific than we have been, to even give that consideration.
Yes, I think what you're suggesting sounds like a good compromise, where we perhaps make the schedule a little condensed upfront, laying out clearly the timelines for building permit issuance, so that could be more staff-proposed schedule. And then for the purposes of the tax credit financing, we can build in those buffers and those timelines, based on Alta's feedback.
And I just, I do want to also state, as the housing manager, that staff is supportive of the time that it takes to get the tax credit financing. So having had this conversation after this initial proposal about requiring three rounds, we accept that reality, and the fact that, in fact, before the tax credit financing, there are stages of finance, estate financing, that the project has to apply for. And that, too, can take additional time. So it's not only three years that we're looking at, we're looking at possibly longer than that. And staff understands that, and is accepting of that, and is not attempting to suggest that we should somehow ignore the average time it takes an affordable project to get completed, even a very well-positioned one, like we believe that this one is. But also, that staff's concern is really looking at the full schedule, so thank you, Mayor Nash, for pointing that out, that we're also looking at the permitting times, we're looking at from top to bottom, so it's not just the point at which we're going out for tax credits, which is only possible after completion of the podium. It's the time before that as well, that staff is looking at and saying, oh, this is what's taking us to 2037. So I just wanted to be clear about that.
Okay. Then Deputy Mayor, I...
Sure. Okay. I am finding myself, well, I guess one more question. The applicant's proposed versus the applicant's proposed with buffers has a difference of December 2030, or I guess conceivably two years beyond that. To hit arena cycle numbers, we have to have it permitted but not built by 2031, is that right? So I guess my question would be, could we do that using the applicant's proposed? Do we still think we can qualify and get the permitting done by 2031, and then being okay with everything else?
That might be difficult with the buffers that they're proposing, vice versa, so that was one of the concerns with the applicant-proposed schedule, with the buffers, that that could take us beyond the 2031 timeline.
Okay. Going backwards a little, another concern that I've had raised is, while I'm very thrilled that we're adding units, I think that's great, I'm also thrilled that we're adding family units, which are going to be some more two- and three-bedroom. But if I figure, and I don't have the mix as far as what the quantities of bedrooms are, but we're looking at less than .4 parking spaces per, during business hours, which I think is going to be difficult for families. I mean, looking at what we have... I mean, looking at what we have at Kikue, I think we're at more like 0.6 or 0.7 parking spaces. So, that is a concern that I don't know if we can address, but I just want to table. As far as the residential assurances of $3 million and 3.5, what, at what point would they, and let's hope this doesn't happen, because the idea is to try to move forward, but what would qualify that to be, meaning, hey, what is it, just the projects stop moving forward and then they've lost that, it's been turned back to the city? Or what's the qualifying events that would end the, do you understand what I'm saying? Or, okay, good. I'll just let you answer then, instead of stopping.
So, the 3.5 million, it's kind of like the true-up contribution at the end of the project is something the applicant, the commercial development team would have to pay should the residential project have not received financing or not broken ground at the stage of getting their first tenant CFO, a certificate of occupancy. Should the residential project be moving forward? Should it be receiving tax credit financing before that step or perhaps even soon after that step? The city would probably not ask for those funds or would return those funds. But if there's a long gap between the commercial project, having the tenants occupying the building and the residential actually getting built, then the city would probably use those funds to promote the development of the affordable project.
Okay. And then, upon completion, that full 6.5 million is reimbursed to them, correct?
Yes. If the project, if the residential project gets built and gets financed in the timelines and within the buffers stipulated, then those monies would be returned to the project developer.
I guess my other question would be, going back to the union aspect of this, while I'm thrilled that the carpenters have agreement and will have carpenter union labor, I obviously am concerned that, you know, this is public housing and it's going to be affordable housing units for people. And I certainly don't want us to skimp on plumbing, electrical, the fire sprinklers in these buildings. So, is there anything that we can do as a city to, you know, require or request that we're using, you know, prevailing wage, not only prevailing wage, but committee work training and actually using all of the trades for this project?
Through the mayor, I might turn that question over to either Prasanna or Alex. The prevailing wage is something that is required because it's city land and that is something that is always built into the ENA. However, requiring, like, union labor, that's not something that the city can invoke because we do not currently have policies. But I'll turn it over to Prasanna.
Right, no, that's correct. I mean, the prevailing wages are required because the city is devoting land towards the project as far as the union labor aspect is concerned. I mean, the development team would have to agree to something like that. I mean, it's a negotiation, it's an agreement, it's the DDLA, Disposition Development Loan Agreement. And, you know, you've heard the applicant speak to that issue, but I also want to emphasize that's not the exact decision point that's before you right now. What's before you is, are you okay with the 3.5 million or the 10 million or one? And also, are you okay with the schedule as proposed by the applicant with the buffers? Understanding that in the worst-case scenario, multiple review cycles with no tax credit financing, that you're looking at a potential 2037 date.
Sure. Well, you're saying 3.5, but it's six, because it's three plus 3.5, right?
Well, yes. It's, the last payment would be 3.5 million. And when you add it to the prior payment of three, that gets you to six and a half.
I get it. So, it's going to be three either way. And then, it's three plus three and a half, or three plus three and a half, or three plus 10?
Correct. The way Rachel framed it before was accurate. I mean, it's the same initial payment to begin with under both scenarios. It's just the last payment that, where there's a difference between staff and applicant. Staff is just 10, applicant is just 3.5. Is that clearer?
Yeah, it's clear. I'm okay with both options, too.
Sure.
So, a couple of things I wanted to, you'd said earlier that on the city-owned property, that if the low market didn't go through, we could build market-rate housing. That Surplus Lands Act would prevent that, right? It would have to be below-market rate housing under state law.
If I can chime in here, so, are you asking if the residential affordable project fell through, would we have to go through the Surplus Lands Act again?
What I'm asking is, I'll try to make it clear. Staff members said that we could always build market-rate housing. And it's my understanding, even, and I want to be completely clear, that I've met with a developer a number of times on this, two times recently. And I've also talked to many of the building tradespeople. So, I just want to make that transparent, that I've actually been engaged in conversations with people on this project and on this item before us. But what I heard was that we could build below-market, build market-rate housing here. And I've been told, I'm not schooled on this, but I've been told, actually in a conversation with the developer, if I remember correctly, that when I brought that up with them, that we can't do market-rate housing because of the Surplus Lands Act. I want to clarify that, if that's true.
Yeah, that's not quite right, because we've already gone through.
Never is.
I mean, we've already gone through the Surplus Lands Act. That was the initial stage of the project that staff had spoken to. So, if the residential project, affordable project were to fall through, it wouldn't necessarily require the city to go through a Surplus Lands Act process again. There's certain information that we would need to provide to HCD to document the failure of the affordable development project, but it wouldn't require, as we read the law, to go through the SLA project twice, process twice, that is.
And so, then, thank you. On another matter, you know, when I was looking at this, and I wasn't extremely clear, because I was thinking, the first-round discussion is, that there might be a compromise. And I think, by the way, I want to thank Councilwoman Lee for really asking some good questions and helping me clarify some of the things in my mind, as well as everybody else, but especially her. But it seems to me that we might be able to do something where there's a greater penalty if we miss the permit with 2031 for the below-market rate housing. But that would also require us to do some hard and fast agreements to get staff to bring the permits forward. So, I could be looking for something like that, where there might be a penalty if the housing isn't permitted by that time. But unless staff performs in getting that information out, that penalty would be null and void.
So, Councilmember Hedges, I think you're saying something similar to what I said before.
Pretty close.
In terms of the permitting and the scheduling.
But adding that the staff would be held.
Right. And then, we want to get very, very detailed so that it does actually conform more to the staff-proposed buffers through the permit process. But when it comes to the tax credit, that staff works with Alta Housing and the developers to say, what is a realistic timeframe? But then, once again, having that sort of baseline.
And not delay permits.
Right. But that really got to, because then you can.
In other words, we want to focus on this so we make sure we get the units.
Right. That's what I'm hearing from you.
That's right.
How are?
That was my compromise that I was looking at. And actually, Councilwoman Lee helped me, and you did, too, formulate that idea.
Okay. So, Councilmember Lee, does that fit with, because I heard your concern was more around the, making sure the tax credit timing was appropriate?
I, well, I really appreciate the analysis and the intention behind it, which is to get an expedited implementation. I hesitate to, I mean, I'm open to, I'm open to exploring this idea, but I also am hesitant. Right now, today, we can, you know, we can make sure that this moves forward with some guidance on ways that we can incentivize, hold accountable both parties to, and as expedited feasible timeline as possible. I'm, I want, I feel a little bit uncomfortable with putting hard and fast conditions because we know that there's just so many that are out of our control that we might not be able to, you know, to codify in a deal term, you know, at this juncture. And I just would hate for that to further delay this process. And so, I'm a little bit, while I appreciate the intention, I'm not totally there with executing it tonight as a fully baked idea. It just doesn't, it seems to me that the city is best served with the agreements that have already been laid out and the most clarified timeline that will accommodate a, you know, a well-informed timeline that takes into account economic conditions, delays in development timelines, you know. You find the remains of one of our indigenous folks in the, you know, in a hole in the ground in San Mateo. I mean, there's just so many things that can happen that can cause delays. And I just, I really hesitate to, I'm just not sure that that's the best path forward at this moment. But I'm open to hearing if there's a creative solution.
City manager.
So, I think, understanding that we're trying to wrap this up, because we have the regular council meeting, I think the decision points are here. I would say that we're looking at, from what I'm hearing so far, is option two with the 3.5 million on the outset for the fee. And then, the other piece is, what I need to hear from council is, I heard from the developer, you're kind of hearing from staff, get it permitted by 2031 and built by 2037, from what the applicant has.
That's what I was getting at, to give them a time and some penalty if they don't get to. Let me finish, 2031. But if we don't perform, then they're held harmless on that penalty.
So, that's a little bit different about just kind of how we've structured it so far with the overall timeline.
So, I think, what I heard from Mayor.
Because right now.
Mayor Nash, that she thinks that might be a good idea.
Well, I was saying that, I was looking more at the staff-proposed buffers as the 10.25 years as the bottom line, but that if, that we would need to amend it based on staff's work with the applicant about the tax credits. So that we use the staff-proposed buffer, the 10.25 years. And then, if it had to get, you know, they would have to negotiate.
Similar, yes.
Yes. Justine.
Hi, I just wanted to add a clarifying point, that the residential cannot pull the permit until that we get all our financing, including the state tax credits, the federal tax credits, and the other state funds that we're applying for.
And they can't start the financing applications until the garage is built, right? And so, that's a huge, you know, there's just so many steps to this process that need to go really well before we can even go after the dollars of the state and the federal tax credit. So, I'm comfortable, I think we, I think the rub here is that, like, we really want to see this project, we believe in it so much, and we want to make sure that we're moving everything towards that goal of actually making it happen. I don't want us to stumble, you know, at the last second with imposing, you know, imposing conditions that actually might trip us up later, when we have a chance to get this done tonight and make sure that, you know, that we've really considered every possible outcome with as much grace and feasibility in our analysis to make sure that it can happen on a reasonable, feasible timeline.
And I couldn't agree more.
I think you make a good argument as well.
But the one thing I would say is, I think there's an opportunity to do everything you're saying, but to put the onus on the city to move things through. If that was one of the major issues and if things come up in the permitting process that we didn't know about, that we can add that in. But there's a baseline.
We definitely can add that in. That's absolutely correct. That's what staff is committed to doing and talking with the developer.
That gives the applicant, if you do find things or if something happens that's way out of whack, it can be accommodated. And the city is held to account for making certain timelines and certain deadlines. And if other things come in that we don't know, then we need to add them in, because that's not fair to the applicant. So, how, what?
So, I would say that in my discussions with the developer, they had concern about the speed with which they would get permits. And that's why I'm bringing this up, because I want to see them get their permits on a timely basis, because I want to see these bricks put together.
Right. So, I think we're agreeing. Councilmember Lorraine?
I would just note that I think we heard the assistant city manager indicate that the city is putting extra effort into this process with regard to expediting it above and beyond what we would for a standard project, similar to what we did for Kikue, with an eye toward doing what we can to get this to the point where we're looking for tax credit financing and giving, you know, as soon as possible. I think part of the confusion, city manager, is that this option two of seeking a, you know, it to be permitted by 2031 is really sort of in between the staff suggestion and the applicant's. And I feel like, from what I've heard from the applicant and the assistant city manager, that there's a shared goal of pursuing that option without necessarily being able to be tethered by it, because we don't know when we'll get the tax credit financing. So, with that, I am comfortable with the applicant's proposal.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
From a timeline, schedule, I'm okay with the applicant's proposal and with the assurances, I think we, also, it's the 6.5, so, yes.
Okay. So, I guess.
I will go along with what the vice mayor said, but I want to focus on the developer and get them together with the rest of the billing trades to make sure that we have local hire on this project.
And that's a whole nother thing that I completely agree with, both from a local hire perspective and.
And there is, on the sewer plant, we required all union work on that, and it was required over the objection of the city manager at that point. I was at the meeting. So, it's not, it is something the city can do. They can require a PLA.
Well, I think that's, you're getting a strong desire from the council that will look to you to see what.
So, I think we have basically option two, which we're looking at the 3.5 million contribution at the final CFO for the commercial development. We also then have the applicant's timeline with a buffer built in to the 2037 on the outset. And then, what I just don't have from you yet is, staff had proposed the CPI escalation, or do we just leave it at the 3.5 million amount that we have there without CPI escalation?
Is it true that the first time that the applicant heard about this was when the staff report came out? About the CPI?
That is correct. We did, well, we shared it with them in a meeting. They didn't read it in the staff report first, but the meeting that we had before they read the staff report.
It was less than a week ago.
Correct.
Okay. I don't, I don't think I can support that, given the.
So, we have one.
I concur with the mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's the direction we needed.
The last thing I'll note is that the city manager will extend the ENA, which would otherwise expire in October.
That would be a good idea. Great.
I see nodding heads. Okay.
Okay.